And I know our emergency preparedness team is hard at work on it, but we are going to have to really step up and start making some differences for our citizens. Samantha Buckley, our new director at the Sheriff's Department was amazing. She held twice a day sessions and it was so helpful to know that, you know, the crews were out there and estimates on Monroe's were going to be cleared and it was so helpful. The whole county came together as well as our city. And when I heard that we were going to have two more days without heat, I just had to open up our community center. And we did serve about thirty people, hot, warm food, and they were across graciously black and tailored. We had cots set up and there were three people wanting to spend the night to get warm. And thank goodness the heat came on. They all had heat set, heated their homes. And it was very, very wonderful that we didn't have to spend the night on those cots. But I just wanted to thank councilors, everyone for helping out. And Jack O'Brien showed up with how many cases of water, like ten cases of water and soup for us? And it was, it was, the response was wonderful. But lots of learning lessons. I know the staff is assessing all of the needs and will be getting going on agenda items as addressing all of this. But I just wanted to take a brief moment and let everyone know how much I appreciate your coming and helping. Let's go into our, are there any changes or additions to the agenda? On the consent agenda, we have the minutes from November twenty first. We did get the council table, which I did review and approve. We had a revenue and expenditure report. Are there any questions on any of these reports?
I have questions, thank you. So on page eleven maybe three of the first page of revenue.
Yes.
It looks like we haven't gotten any cash from the marijuana tax yet.
You should see it the next time because I just got the notice that they distributed it. Distributed it, so you should see it the next time. They're always a little further behind than anybody else.
Okay, and then the other question I have is on the harbor fund. I don't see any budget for staff or any expenditures.
I just remember in the budget, the transfers out, we need, I need to have them do the transfers out. But what we did was we listed approximately what the breakdown would be in each of the categories. But the general fund is where the payroll actually comes out. The idea is that these transfers will go from the other funds to go into the payroll to pay for that. So we only have to fill them to the one thing.
So there is no, there's no cash for the transfers?
They, they need to do the transfers out, so I, I.
Or for the transfers out.
The transfers out would be just transferred from the harbor fund for, I haven't given out each quarter, for the harbor fund, ten, the street fund, the harbor, the streets, water sewer. Yes.
Yeah, so we have no information. Because what I'm trying to figure out, so our fuel sales were hundred ninety-one thousand. And expenditures on the fuel were almost a hundred eighty thousand. And I was just wondering where we are in terms of being able to recruit, recruit any of our costs for harbor activities for most sales.
I, if, I don't know, but we had that, that discussion about where do we cost at this point, other than the outside of the various things like increasing mortgage and things like that. Are, what, what is it that?
So with no information on staff costs, I don't know how we're doing. And for you to break even in terms of covering any of human fuel.
One of the things that.
Excuse me, we're looking, can I ask you a question? You, you mentioned this figure of a hundred ninety-one thousand dollars for it. And you said that the monthly cost of that fuel, I'm not saying the cost of the fuel, it might.
Fuel sales is somewhere.
Fuel sales is one ninety-one, one sixty-eight.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, yeah.
What, and what did we pay for that fuel?
One hundred seventy, almost a hundred eighty thousand dollars.
Where do you see that figure? A fourteen, I just go straight to.
Hey, I'm talking about this report, Councilor.
I'm talking about PAC, I've got page thirteen of eighty-three, I've got a harbor fund.
Yep.
That no, I've got fuel sales, but I'm not saying it to you. Fran is talking, I've got a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in costs.
Can I have, can research this and give back to you?
It's page twenty-two of eighty-three.
Sure, Councilor, maybe just provide and come back so I can make sure. And then I can provide something at the next meeting for everybody.
Third from the long.
Yeah.
Twenty-two of eighty-three, thirty-four thousand.
Twenty-two of eighty-three.
Yeah, there is.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you, eighty-three, I have a few questions.
Yeah, so, yeah, I just think as before we go into budgeting and all that stuff, I think we really need to figure out.
Better handle where we're at.
Where we're at.
I'm absolutely, oh, okay.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't want to work session alone.
Yeah.
I, I'm the first one to admit that I really could use some tutoring on reading this.
Oh, okay, um, we can certainly do that and.
And I can do it one on one unless if nobody else wants to.
It's, it's absolutely up to the council. I mean, as far as where we stand, this report, that expenditure report, the revenue, the detail tells you where we are. But if you're looking from, the revenue expenditure report has everything broken out. So I moved all of the expenses. So if you look at this report, it shows the harbor expenditures for staff. But those were not put in the harbor category because those are actually coming out of the admin. So the admin expense expenditures includes all, captures all payroll. And that was the way that we set that up last year. But if you want to kind of see where we're at, I'll provide some more details. But Councilor, maybe you can drop in sometime and make sure that I'm going to give you the right stuff and then I can give you more details. But absolutely, right before we start budgeting, you will get everything. So it would be great, you get lots of details.
I could just add one thing.
Sure.
To what? Fran, I don't know if this is where you were going, if the council is going this way, but this is just a five percent margin. I can't imagine any fuel station, you know, living or operating at five percent margin.
We have to research all of this. We're going into budget season, so this will be one of our tasks is to review and see where we're at. So I think that's something that Ken will be working on as well. How can, how can more details of the harbor fund be taken away for next time or if we decide to do this other question?
I have a question, please. I came back on page eleven under grant revenue. And it looks like there's no grant revenue and a hundred thousand dollars to budget it. How close are we to getting grant revenue?
Which grant revenue? Are you talking about the actual?
On number eleven of street fund, actually all of them.
Pardon me, which particular grant are you just saying, any grant?
Just say a grant.
Oh, well, the one we filed that we got from, we signed the contracts and everything. We'll get it at their convenience. Today, I don't know why they won't go get it. The small city allotment grant, we just signed the agreement for that too. And again, over the holidays, they'll, they'll send us the money when we get it. So I don't have any money yet. We submitted everything, but we just, it just takes.
Thank you.
Sorry, did you update me on what that small city allotment grant?
That was for the Bay Street sidewalk improvements project.
In what amount?
Two hundred and maybe six thousand, I believe, and some hundreds. I can't remember exactly.
But we have expended money on that.
Oh, no, no, we're waiting, it's kind of in our city engineer's chamber right now.
Engineer design.
Right, because he's going to finalize the designs and everything and then we'll know when we're going to get started. And I told him I don't want to get started during fourth season. So, so sooner or later or redo it. I'll save it, so. But I'm just, we're waiting to hear back. I think we have a meeting after the beginning of the session.
Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda then as presented?
I think I motion to accept it.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Has been moved and accepted to accept the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion?
Any other discussion?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And you opposed? Thank you. Looks like our sheriff is not here, so we'll go on to Friends of Honor Rock. Do you want to come up here, Dennis, an assistant?
Yes, Marlene Kohlman is here for me.
Yes.
So it's going to be a stereo for the.
Okay, come on up.
Do we have any? I just put in this right. Pac here about this presentation.
Um, I, I don't believe we do. You didn't have any material? It's just a few slides, but this presentation, and I did put a link on, and I'm so sorry, I forgot to remind you. I did put a link on the agenda for everybody to take a look at this presentation. And I meant to remind you guys because it's eleven minutes and we didn't want to show that. So this is a short, just a, and everything is out of them.
The main, the main reason why, because last time this year, we had not yet completed the video. That you folks helped us help fund for us, so that's the main thing. But I thought we should probably step through this. It's easy to forget what we're doing and maybe just talk a little bit about our mission and so on, so.
This starts as soon as we get going, so.
Okay.
Okay. Well, yours, well, it's still delayed.
I think the energy is short, it's short enough, delaying the computer.
Everything is sort of doing its work these days, that's for sure.
Could I get your names again? Dennis.
I'm Dennis, Marlene.
Marlene.
There we go.
It's M A R L E N Y and E. Ah, okay, there we go. And so you go on to the next slide. This next slide is the interpretive map that stations and various places are on the Punch Bowl to help people navigate, people navigate and also to figure out where they shouldn't go. So it has areas where birds are nesting and so on, so that's.
I just saw the double Punch Bowl today.
Yeah, there's one on the double Punch Bowl. There's also one on the restroom, the huge wall there, and that one's a bigger one. And everybody goes to that parking lot, so that's a, there's a third place we're going to put it soon just to make sure everybody gets a view of it as they approach the Punch Bowl. So the next slide, just our mission. I think the important word here is inspire because we're not enforcing. We're trying to inspire. The visitors have come to be respectful, to know more about the things they came for. And also to reach out to schools and inspire kids as well. Because we have a program that will pay them for summer work. So they get trained on all the ecology there, the critters that are there and that sort of thing. So this is, you know, really our key activity is to inspiration and stewardship. In relevance to Depot Bay, I mean, this is enriching the experience of visitors, but also this is our precious home and we want to see it taken care of and encouraged respectful visitation. So we'd like to talk about a little, a little time on just an update and a few thank yous, reporting the results of the video that you folks funded. And we had a little teaser there. I know it was, there was a link to the video or actually to our website where the video is placed on the face page, homepage. So I don't know if any of you got to look at it, but it recognized some of the people there. They're local people and in a sense, it's a kind of advertisement for some of the recreational activities, whale watching and fishing and that sort of thing. But it also has a sense of getting people to understand what's out there and why to be careful. So, okay, so this is the second, only the second year of our programming. And the core activities are the interpretive programs and community science. So this is where we plant people at this onsite and to be knowledgeable, to retrain them. So that's something that, you know, we'll come to later, but this is what we're seeking financing for in the long haul is to get that core activity of ours stable and useful and, you know, doing what the job is supposed to do, which is, you know, doing still stewardship. And for two thousand twenty-three, we have a few things. The video is obviously one of them and there's a website that was launched in conjunction with that. And we also work to, for the designation of the new conservation area, of which there are eight now that have been approved. Councilor Act has written and sponsored one of them. I, we work with Lincoln City Ottoman to get, you know, the two, the one that's very local here at Cape Bow weather approved. So that's been done. So the Typhoon Ambassador Program has used volunteers and trained teenage interns, high school interns. We have over ten thousand engagements this year, which is quite a doubling last year's amount. And we had, I guess, seven interns compared to two.
So we doubled our engagement or interactions with visitors in this Typhoon Ambassador Program. And the way we have it set up and piloted it last year, which I think we might have told them before, we had two interns from local high schools. And we wanted to try out using high schoolers instead of adults to engage with families who go down to the Typhoons and the children. And it was very, very well received and successful. And this past summer, we tripled the number of paid interns for the Typhoon Ambassador Program. And so this is really a good conduit for our organization to engage with high school students and middle schoolers as well in a way that they can kind of build their skills. So if they're interested in ocean science or marine science and want to learn more already, and then they have an opportunity for our training to increase that knowledge and put it to use in public. And then they gain some of the soft skills like communication skills, communicating with the public, leadership, knowing how to engage with people of different backgrounds, different ages. And so we're looking to expand on them more next season.
So the other core activity is community science. And this year, we've got more coverage than we did the year before. The, this is the, you know, the kind of appealing photo up there. Everybody will just see baby birds. But that's, nest monitoring is one of the community science things that we do. That particular bird is a species of concern. There are only about six hundred in the whole coast. And when you compare that to something like murs, which are tens of thousands, it's quite a difference. So there's, they're on a known quantity and we're tracking their survival and viability. But some of the others include sea star monitoring, marine debris survey. We measure ocean acidification this year, we've taken on that job. Reporting stranded mammals and beach birds. So there are quite a lot of ways that the community can actually get involved in science. And this, these are all sent to central databases that can even report it out. And actually, I think the reporting is getting a little bit better. We want to inspire people to volunteer to do that by giving them some feedback of, you know, what's, well, what's the situation? Are we high or are we low compared to the rest of the state and so on?
What kind of bird is that?
This is a black whale catcher.
Oh, it's a whale catcher.
And at the, at the Punch Bowl, there have been up to three nests. And as long as, I've owned it for about ten years. And up until last year, there were no surviving, no chicks that survived the fledging, which is not a good sign. But this is one of the areas that is very, very flooded with people. And, you know, I'm not saying that's a factor in this case because there are a lot of other hazards out there for these birds, so. So thank you, number one, is the kind of old news, I guess, but the fact that this, this council sent a letter of support for that, for the creation of the Bow Weather Marine Conservation Area. And without letters like that, this wouldn't have happened. So kudos to you guys for stepping up and protecting our territory. So there's another stretch of land. What that means is that actually from the Marine Reserve all the way up to Cape to Velco is now part of that, that Cape Bow weather reserve. So we're making progress year by year to get that. It doesn't have the same restrictions as a, as a Marine Reserve did, but the fact of the designation allows us to get some funding to interact again with visitors along a new path of, of stretch of the ocean and that's all very good. And the next line, that's, that's an old announcement, but it's sort of, it hit public radio, public O K T. So the next step in that actually is now the Land Conservation and Development Department will take on the task of helping to organize all of them to set up plans for each of the eight conservation areas. Thank you, number two, is providing funding for the video. And I think I'm going to let Marlene take over in this because she is our communications expert. And as a, as a day job, so we're very grateful for the volunteer time that she spent with the board.
So first of all, thank you again so much for the funding. I know, you know, we had specifically asked for funding for a couple of projects. One was a website because as many of us know, you don't count in this world as an organization without having a website and then maybe a Facebook group page, but website is really important to us. So I think there's a visual, the link to it is in your agenda. If you haven't looked at it, I encourage you to do so. We soft launched it a few months ago, which means we're still building it and we're adding to it. But I think it's in really decent shape right now that it's valuable to people to go and look at narratives and understand who we are. And now for the video. So this was a labor of love over a course of several months because I am part-time volunteering, so. But we were fortunate to be able to have Kristen Dawn, who was a former Marine program lead for O D F W. And Kristen Robert Culver, who is an O S U researcher who does a lot of work in the Marine Reserve. Von Robeson, who spoke on behalf of his uncle having worked with the fishing community to site on a rock Marine Reserve. And he even left in a quote where he says it is to keep other, you know, more bigger parts of the ocean out of our hands, but ended blank. And then we have a couple of our board members and Fon Custer, who's a Marine educator, and also Jenny Cholwell Strong, who was a chartered B C student on the stamp, and also on the court. So the video.
I was trying, it's not giving sound, so it should be giving.
Yeah, but the video is posted on our YouTube channel, which you got to through the homepage of our website. And it really highlights the Marine Reserve and the engagement with the fishing community, its value to research that aids fisheries and also, you know, with the visitation as well.
A lot of cool flyovers of the harbor and.
It should, it should.
It's showing captions, it's showing captions.
Yeah, it should.
Oh, here we go.
Okay, here we go. It will have captions.
I don't know if you can hear it, but that's, there'll be captions.
Yeah, the volume's not, it shows captions.
Okay.
I saw it, I was like, okay, it shows captions.
Yeah, so this is the beginning of the video. This is a forty-three second clip. It's in a one-minute video because everybody has so many great things to say.
How many hours of taking, did we do interviews?
Oh, my gosh.
To, to narrow it down to eleven minutes. It was supposed to be six.
It was hard, it was hard. But anyway, I've drawn footage of it. I hired a videographer who's amazing, he ever did videos, strength of the media, I highly recommend them. But we've had three hundred views since October of the video online. And I'm really pleased, this was kind of just icing on the cake, that I did submit it to a couple of film festivals, what the heck? And out of the hundred fifty-five submissions were aligned to the Big Blue Film Fest here in Newport, they chose our film to be shown there on Saturday. So if you have, thank you. Yeah, it could be over at the Hafield Marine Science Center, it was down in the building.
Harvard also is being shown at the PAC in Newport, the former Harvard Center. So it's split this year, so we're, we're one of the entries. That's okay, we'll.
So it's getting all the good visibility because of the bottom line.
It recognizes a lot of the character, yes, so it's, it's local people.
Yeah.
And the third thank you is for funding, giving us a little bit of funding this year, which we really appreciate. And we're really seeking a kind of ongoing support for our, our core activities, which again are mini-science and, you know, interpretation work that we do. Getting students and high school students trained and involved and inspired in their own right, but then also interacting with visitors, so that's, that's our core activity. So we'd like to see some ongoing support if you can find a way to do that and help us with our core activities.
Do you mean like a permanent endowment?
Yes, yes, exactly. Hundreds of millions, if you will.
Well, I just, I just think, Dennis, when you say ongoing support, that, you know, we have a budget that operates from year to year. And I don't think we have ever pledged ongoing support to anybody. I think it's enough that we see our fleet of flowers and Friends of Honor Rock and Depot Bay Pantry come in here every year and pitch us. I think that's an important part of it.
Oh, sure, I remember seeing what it is. I mean, it's not expectation, it's, it's a request that we'll be back every year and you can return us down. But, you know, you pay, I think, eleven thousand dollars for the nearshore group that formed this, this reserve. And there are organizations like Friends, Neighbors for Kids, that I know there's a good sense of ongoing value, value that it provides to the city.
Absolutely. The rest of the presentations are, I don't know.
Oh, well, you might recognize this, however.
Uh, these are just some grabs I took out of the video.
Those are, yes, stills within the video, so. So, that's it, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No questions?
We'll see you at budget time.
Really appreciate the work that you do.
Oh, thank you, yeah. I know that there are other works that, that's related and Fon is connected with them.
Absolutely. I did, I did a tour with Fon last year, my students.
Oh, cool, great. Volunteer, everybody.
I will look for more. Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to our mission and group reports, emergency preparedness.
Okay, well, we were not prepared for what we had. You know, weather people predicted ice and snow, we have some snow, wake up tall. I think a lot of people were not prepared to generate things like that. We have a generator, but it didn't work, so how prepared was I? You know, you have to do an individual type of assessment. I think it was really admirable from there. It had the warming center, the soup kitchen, and what have you, because a lot of people came in. A lot of people just stayed, you know, for hours and hours because at least it was warm. We had a meeting yesterday and we had, I think, over twelve. So we're moving forward. One of the things that we're asking, I left a message for Samantha Buckley, with, she's the emergency manager for Lincoln County, to give, to talk to us. And she'll put her own spin on it. I know that, I think it was last January when Jenny Demarest had test failure rising. I know that, I think it was last January, when Jenny Demarest had cash failure rising. And I'm guessing that Samantha will probably mention that the cold snap and what we can do to prepare that. I'm not sure what her comments will be, but we invited her for either the twenty-seventh of April or the fourth of May. I've given her those two days to see if she's available, because the community center's available. What I would like to do during her meeting is to have the emergency preparedness committee introduce ourselves to the community, tell them what we've been doing, what we're trying to do. One of our goals is to, we've been talking about this, is to identify neighborhoods, we call them islands, to where the different islands can be self-supporting in neighborhoods. People have different skills, we have different things that would be provided for each other. So that's one goal that we have, and we're working on that. The whole premise of this is if you have an emergency situation through neighbors who can take care of the neighbors, you may not be able to get to the cache across the bridge. We would be able to help each other, so we're working on logistics of that. Let me see what else I have here. Another thing too, with that particular meeting, is Samantha comes. I would like to have some time for the public to come and talk about their aspirations, ask us questions, what are we doing, and give suggestions. I think that's a part that, important part that we include in the neighborhood and our citizens. And we're, it's just a busy committee, we've got a lot of ideas. And Lindsay, do you have anything to add to that?
I'm feeling to talk a little bit more about the ice storm and kind of lessons learned. And it sounds like we're going to try to schedule a work session in the future to really delve into it more.
Yes.
But I, I really, and me as a committee, really wanted to thank Kathy and Kim and Brady, who really took the reins for the city. And it sounds like the city does not have protocol.
No.
At, for, for example, when to open a cache or when to open a shelter. So that's something that we're talking about, looking at some other communities, what kind of procedures they have in place. So my understanding at the meeting yesterday was that there have been some lessons learned at the city level. So of course, we have this big diesel down in the harbor that we have thought of as a resource during emergencies, but it sounds like we didn't really have a way to transfer that fuel in an efficient, in an efficient way, except for using the cans that are already ready. So, so like, looking at things like how can we transfer fuel, like on the back of a truck? We have one generator that's for City Hall, but we don't actually have a generator for the Community Hall. So that's something that we need to look into. And then they were explaining also about the transfer switches, saying you would be able to actually hook the generator up directly.
Just for development, yeah.
So looking, looking at those. So there were some real concrete lessons that we can take out of it. But I think, and I, and I personally think that this was a really good lesson for all of us, to kind of understand your role of self-sufficiency versus what you expect services from the city or private department or other entity. And we're going to talk about declaring emergency today. Yeah, but I think, just, just moving forward, I think it's really important that the city does establish some protocol, so it's really clear what's expected. And it's, as far as I understand it, it's not a cut and dry, like, my understanding is that we, like on the third day is when we opened our warming shelter. And, you know, there was a lot of chatter on social media about what's acceptable or what's too much, what's not enough. And so protocol for that kind of incident isn't as cut and dry as like, okay, so twenty-four hours in, you're going to do this, because other factors have to be taken into account, like temperature. But I do think it was a really good learning experience for us. And I just want to thank Kathy and Brady and Kim so much for really, really kind of acting as a half, you know, for us.
We also had tremendous support from Paul Carter and Al. We put in a lot of work to do, to do that. You'll start with me?
Thank you, Mayor. Sure, I appreciate it. And thank you, Council of Beddingford, for your comments. I do, I do want to say something though, regarding protocols. And Council Akeem, you know where I'm coming from, because we had a meeting about this. It's my belief that we do have protocols, and they're in our emergency operations plan. And for example, the protocols for after-action report are all spelled out in here, so that all we have to do is sit down and read section six point four. And it impresses things like equipment, outfunctions, and shortages, and so on. The.
I'm sorry, aren't we doing committee reports right now, or is this in appropriate time?
Well, I'm just responding to.
No, this is a committee report, sorry, you're not on the committee.
No, I'm not on the committee, I'm on the council.
My understanding is we're doing committee reports, and you're not on the committee. So maybe during your council, comments are more appropriate.
Oh, I certainly can, Mayor, but I want to point out one thing, if I could, before it's over, that being on the committee, I don't.
I'm sorry, my understanding is that we are in a place on the agenda that is commissioned reports.
For ensuring the welfare of citizens and visitors within the city. The city council.
Right.
Not the committee, the council. And it's time that we took that responsibility.
Exactly. And that's what we're going to do. Okay.
Any other comment? I just had an idea, I guess. There was a lot of learning that we've all done, and I'm wondering if the, this, the committee could look into having a place on the website, city website, where we could solicit, hey, what was the, you know, what was your lesson learned, a personal lesson? Because that might be something you can talk about, because I think people had, they learned a lot. Like, hey, we didn't check our generator ahead of time, or, yeah, I had my radio, but this is my, this is me, like to go back, wish to go back, and getting it out, I just turned on the radio in my car, but still. You know, so while it's still fresh in our minds, maybe the committee could look into whether or not we could have a few questions on our website, and encourage people just to, while it's fresh, to note things down.
And just to make it clear, you're not on the committee either.
No, I'm directing this as a question to the, I gave it to the committee. Thank you.
Okay, let's move forward with the, we don't need houseless harbor.
We did not meet in, in the center, but we have a meeting next Wednesday, away from tomorrow.
Oh, okay, thank you, Jack, thank you so much. Planning, who wants to hear the planning? Parks, Suzanne, are you here for parks?
No, I'm just trying to listen.
Okay, wonderful. Seven enhancement? And Jeff, did you have anything?
Oh.
No?
Okay, all righty. Are there any public comments this evening?
All righty, we'll move on to the big tire park vacation. Everyone should have just received Kim's action requested. So I'll just open the floor for.
If you don't mind, Madam. Sure. Council Rec and I, so she had provided some extra to your recording codes. So when we first initially proposed this, we proposed this for two reasons. The main one being the safety and security of that area, because it's dangerous. The second one is we'd already, we had had a conversation with property owner that owns two of them, and they were okay with it. Well, since then, they've changed. And after we kept saying, you know, we could go through the process, but once we got to the point where they said, no, we don't want it, and we kind of halted things anyway. But I, Council Rec and I took a drive out to Rocky Creek State Park area. Have you guys been down to that platform?
Yes.
That is an amazing platform. So we were thinking that it would be something that I would send these images to our city engineer to go down and get a probe, maybe take a knock on that's so big, to see what it would cost, if we could look at it for the budget. The, as a temporary fix, while we were out there, Brady suggested trying to drag down the Devil's Punch Bowl. It happened to be sunny during that time, by the way, I think Mother Major was looking out for us when we were out there. Anyway, we wanted us to look at that fence, that kind of protected people from going over the punch bowl. So maybe that's an option that we could explore, having the guys. I think your team could draw something together, or would we want to get it outsourced?
We could get drawings, and then our guys could do that, that's definitely.
Yeah, so, so maybe, you know, one of the most immediate simple fixes is put one of those fair fences, kind of the back, and use that as a temporary fix, at least protect the safety and, you know, safety. Stay away, don't climb the fence, I saw a sign that said, don't climb, don't go over the fence. So we need to do things like that as an option.
Of course, Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
If we remove the sign to that park?
No. The big tire is still there, and it has that old sign that still says the tire park.
Mayor, could I make a suggestion, that we remove that park sign? I think it's an attractive nuisance. And you can tell just by the hole that was left down there, that anybody could be walking along there, tripping and fall to their death.
I know, I know. We have a hazard that is just out there waiting for something to happen.
We have to try it in some way, but if you want to keep the lookout, which I understood from several people, several counselors, then the most immediate way to fix that is to get some drawings and put up a fence with a sign.
But you know, we could something up there right now, cause we're good people from going over that edge.
We, we tried caution tape once, we could try it again, he could put up that ugly orange cyclone fence.
We have to, we have, we have the. Beyond those points, I'm.
Do you have that, that orange cyclone?
Yeah, we, oh, yeah.
You could put up something, so if something really fast, we can put up the barrier.
There has been a sign there.
It has.
It's stuck in the ground.
It just says caution dangerous edge or something like that.
Yeah, so do I have to say that we're not pursuing the vacation?
That is up to you.
I think it's on hold until we get some ideas of how much it costs. I would like to hear from the engineer as well, why he suggested it, because he went out and researched it, and was the one that told us that we should be.
Well, he gave him a visit, and he said it would probably cost more to fix something like this than it would be to do the vacation. I can get him to do that, but we have timelines that we have to move on this vacation. So it has to get before the city has to get the proper planning commission. So I kind of need to know if you want me to bring forward a resolution that basically repeals the one we just did and cancels the vacation. We always do it later if we decide we need to, but because of the timelines, we would need to move on, repealing that now.
So what are the property owners on each side saying?
They don't want the liability, which is my concern. But that's what they said, they just don't want the liability.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I also wanted to come back to the gold seventeen issue I brought up. And there was a piece, a paper that was under your agenda today. And it was not an account plan, it wasn't a zoning rule, so that if you vacate any public land, coastal shoreline, or any public land, there's two provisions, you have to replace that. And there is the second one right there that says, wherever possible, retain this public land for public uses. So that's the other reason to really try to keep it, make it so we try to keep it as an asset for the city, because if we take it away, we have to replace it.
Where do you, that, it's never come from, where is that located?
It's on ours.
Oh, okay, great, thank you, thank you so much.
So you're willing to put up with the liability?
Yes, there's liabilities all over coastal shorelands. We just have to be smart about it, we have to put the fences up, or we have to put the platforms up to protect.
Kind of do something quick.
Yeah, yeah, temporarily, I think Brady had a good idea, you know, is that could be cheap and relatively easy to put in posts and that. But the, we're required by all of the codes to do this. So I understand the concerns about safety, but there are ways of, you know, mitigating for that, and I think we should pursue that.
So whatever you do is if we, since we're going to probably keep the property, because the property owners don't want it, then the city would need to do something as far as protecting that. The most media is the fencing. The second media, the second thing would be the rail tech fencing. And the third would be doing something like the platform, which I thought was pretty awesome. And I really thought it would fall behind on that platform, but for some reason, that is not slippery, even where we thought it would be. So I like that, and we could get some information, so we would need to get a cost on that. So it's a three-phase approach, but more immediately be putting out something there, putting a sign up, and then we work on the rest of the stuff. So since we just can't proceed with a vacation, because you have to have the property owner permission, agree to take it.
Thank you, Mayor. One nice thing about, if we eventually do turn this into a viewpoint, is that it's in Depot Bay. And, and we should do good environmental projects within our city limits.
I agree, but if it's a liability and it keeps falling in.
True enough.
That doesn't make sense to me.
True enough, maybe there's a way to figure that out, I don't know.
I don't know.
So do we have council concurrence on the proceeding with the taking out the resolution that we did last?
I don't know if we do. Do we have council concurrence on moving forward with repealing the resolution at the next meeting? Like I said, if something changes, we can always bring it back.
Yes, I see that.
That's fine. Okay, all right, thank you.
See what we can find out, but please get something up there for you.
So in the early nineties, the park building, which is the Milwaukee Interpretive Center, so you know on the channel side of that city in the early nineties, we put that whole cyclone, rubberized cyclone fencing, you know, chest high. And the poles, and we upgraded that, and it's back from, you know, a long time ago, but we could do something similar to that. And we have a lot of the poles in, in the barn. So we may be just purchasing the rubberized cyclone.
Mayor, in the meantime, we have that sign removed, so it's not an attractive nuisance inviting people in there.
That's fine.
The sandstone sign.
I don't know, is that part of the agreement with the folks who gave the money for the park? Because if you do that, you could have that before you are. We could cover, cover it temporarily. Okay.
Can I ask Brady, is, sorry, just look at rubberized cyclone fencing. So it's chain link fence, but with a barrier, so you can't see through it?
No, no, it's just rubberized, and so it won't rust.
So it looks like.
This is exactly what is down at the, along the channel at the Milwaukee Interpretive. You go down that paved area, there works down.
You can see through it.
Yes, you can see through it, but it's posts on top, so you can.
Mayor, to share your concern, why don't we just close that like we did that parking lot over there? The yellow tape up and say area closed.
They tried that, it was torn down. But I think, I think we need to get something up there.
We could try to expedite that, one of those fences.
Well, I think you have the immediate thing that you're asking.
Oh, yeah, just put an orange.
Before the tourist season starts, we definitely want to get a barrier and something like that.
Yeah, we could put that barricade.
Thank you.
Let's see through all of it.
Oh, moving on to this, declaring a state of emergency. And does everyone have a chance to review this, what Tim's put together? For this really kind of hits the nail on the head that although we don't have major, major, major expenses like the other cities, we are finding some areas that are impacted by this.
I'm hoping it will help us do things like get a new generator. So, uh, it's, that's kind of the reason why we decided to do this. And I think Council of Beddingford asked last night, you know, about the why, the latest, it's okay to do it this late. In fact, it was like positive that the governor kind of declares the state where it's the act of the Christmas bomb, so we're doing this for the year.
So it's resolution number five-five-five dash twenty-four, resolution declaring a state of emergency. Is there a motion to accept this resolution?
I want to accept the resolution declaring emergency state.
I'm sorry, it's been moved to second to declare a state of emergency for the city of Depot Bay. Is there any discussion on the motion? Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. Our emergency operations plan has a section that discusses how and when to initiate an emergency. And I like that, and the fact that there's a tremendous amount of ease and the mayor and her emergency council declaring an emergency can be done like that. And I think that we should be prepared in the future to do it like that, and to always do it whenever we think there is one, because again, as you just said, it puts us in line for all sorts of monies. And the state is declared, the county is declared. Uh, we should be first in on any of these.
Alrighty, is there any other discussion? All in favor say aye, aye, any opposed?
Brady. Hey, I did put a note in there about the Lincoln City and why, I didn't know if I was gonna confuse anybody by showing you Lincoln City declaration.
Okay.
Uh, is that, that is, a lot of the cities actually have this thing, which is a little bit of. So I thought it was pretty good to look at, put something similar on that.
Okay, we are finally, um, doing the first reading of our House List Ordinance number three-four-three dash twenty-four. Is that three, uh, okay. An ordinance amending chapter seventy-two, schedule, uh, schedule two, chapter seventy, section forty of the Depot Bay Municipal Code and adding chapter ninety-seven camping regulations to the city of Depot Bay Municipal Code regulating camping in public places, ensuring public safety and declaring an emergency. This is, um, I need a motion to read this by title.
No, I don't have a motion to read this by title, will you?
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved as seconded to read or ordinance number three-four-three dash twenty-four by title, all in favor say ayes.
Aye.
Any opposed? So open for discussion, um, our first reading, um, the House List Committee did meet, I don't know, for three or four or five, uh, months, uh, going over this very, very detailed. It's also been, um, approved and, and reviewed by attorneys, um, and addresses our situation here in Depot Bay, which just really does not provide any camping, because we don't have any land. So I'll open for questions.
Yes, yeah, and it's very, very detailed and comprehensive and I think you probably work on it. I really do, so it's, it's very good. What, um, I'm struggling with though is I can't figure out where it is legal to camp. And I'd really like it pretty clearly stated, it says, you know, commercial, I'm not reading, but commercial industrial, um, areas. Um, but it says not the harbor, you know, not, not the park, so, um, where would, if it's not clearly spelled out, where would it be legal for somebody who is homeless to be able to camp? And I also maybe I missed it, didn't see many time limits on how long a period. And that I think was also a concern on, um, residential areas where people allowed it, so, yeah, so those are my concerns, I didn't clearly see those things.
I think there is a time limit.
It is the parks, yeah, like at the parking lots and the parks, that's in there and the harbor, which is basically ten A P M, two.
No, not the time, the amount of days, consecutive days.
Oh, okay, they did, they did not address that.
Yeah, so, um, those are, those are, I mean, this is really complete, but I would like to have a discussion and see if we could get some clarity on, um, especially on where, where do we say it'd be okay to camp here in this?
We've initially outlined, um, if you went onto the Harbor Lodge area, um, along where, um, the check dam is, there's just this nice little strip of land for ten, three ten by ten areas that is near the restroom. And we thought that would be about the only place here in town that we could.
I'm not sure where Harbor Lodge is.
Where the Harbor Lodge is, right down here.
Oh, Harbor Lodge.
Yeah, and here where the check dam is.
Yeah.
And there's a little strip, it's about ten feet wide and we have restrooms down there. And we were thinking we could set up three ten by ten areas that possibly.
That would be, that would be good, I mean, I just didn't see anything.
We didn't, um, outline that yet in there because we wanted to bring it to council to kind of see if you had any, I had other ideas of locations, um, it's so hard because you know, you don't want to put it in residential areas, you don't want to put it, you know, downtown in our commercial areas.
And I, I like that, it would be near a restroom and that we can have eyes on it and stuff.
Yeah. Right, right.
It's just that, um, it says no camping in the harbor right now, this ordinance.
Right, in the harbor in particular, down at the docks, that's what we need.
Well, it's, it's, so now I'm confused, because we have to be really clear about where, I think, where and where not. And right now it says no, I consider that a part of the harbor, I'm thinking the same as you are.
Yeah, yeah.
So I think this needs just a little bit of tweaking, I don't think we have to delay very much.
Okay. Okay.
It's just that I think we have to define. If we want people down by the restrooms, you know, if there's a need, you know, and so I think, and we also should, because we don't have the services, you know, allow it, but just encourage people to move on after a certain period of time too.
Right, and that's what we're working with, um, is to have a full list of all of the options available for people to
Mm-hmm.
And, um, I'm really working diligently to try and arrange transportation for folks, because, um, that's gonna be critical.
They have bus passes or something, yeah.
Right, right, and so I'm working with all of those organizations to try and identify
That's right.
services available and where they can go. The, um, greatest obstacle of course is a lot of them, um, do not want shelter and do not want services and just want to hang out. I, I was so amazed on Friday when I went up to a funeral, there were people in all that ice and snow out there in all their tents, I couldn't believe it. There was like twenty people in this whole area where I went and it was just, it was heartbreaking to see, but just amazing, so we've got to really be, Cardinal said that these people, not everyone. So I think the timelines of day, days alight is a good idea to look into that. And our, uh, we had set from, was it ten o'clock to seven o'clock that they could stay in a space?
Yeah, he, right, that was a separate, that was a separate from the parking lots and things like that.
Should have been a private.
Yeah. Because the parking lots were trying to accommodate the charters and the fishermen during the season. And I tried, I wanted to change it to what normals are, which is to let, but the people being able to get in there and park their boats and our park fisherman and stuff like that. And stay with what was there in the ordinance, which is four o'clock.
So just specifically, I'm looking at two, um, page forty-seven of eighty-three. So it says, place to camp, camping is prohibited at all times in the following locations. And if you go down to, um, step five by, um, anywhere along or adjacent to the harbor. So that would have to be changed, okay?
Hmm, okay, alrighty.
And there's another place too that says that, so.
We'll go over this with a fine tooth comb and, and redo. But, yes.
Um, I have a whole bunch of things I want to talk about with this, but I think a good place to start is that, um, my understanding is that we were required to have some areas of public property that's available for camping, so I don't really understand why we have all of this in front of us that is now allowing for camping in private property. I think that is a completely separate issue and I don't want to have them combined. I think that we should focus on public property, which is what we are required through the House Bill and the case law. And I think camping on private property is completely separate and it should not be attached. Um, because what we're doing here is allowing camping all of a sudden in all of these zones, which is absolutely not acceptable. And it's never been brought up in front of this body, um, and I feel like it's just kind of thrown at us in here, which, um, I feel blindsided. Um, I think that we should focus on our obligations based on the House Bill and that private property should not be a part of this at all.
Okay, then Councilor, do you?
I, um, I think because I was, you know, there's people camping on residential property all over town. And as much as I want to really say, let's enforce our code and deal with it, you can't stay in a trailer, you can't, just can't do it, I mean, we don't allow it. We've got to have an option for somewhere else for them to go too, so it's really conflicting to me, but you know, now they're saying, well, if the homeowner goes and pays a fee, then they can let people camp in their yard or whatever. Whereas we don't allow that now, do we? I mean, we can't stay in a trailer, so it's, it's confusing.
So did, why did we decide to keep that in there? We, we had huge discussions on this and, uh, we decided to leave it in there, um. Yeah. We can't remember. Yeah, it's been a while.
So I, I will fight tooth and nail against this, if it has anything to do with private property and camping a lot on private property. So if we can just take that fully off the table and then discuss just the camping on public property, I think that's appropriate, is everybody okay with that?
So you're saying no camping on private property?
Period, that's how it is now and we shouldn't be changing that.
Okay, we can remove that.
Okay, so now I'm just talking about appropriate places for people experiencing homelessness on public property, so city of Depot Bay property. Um, I am not at all in favor of having any of that occur in our tourist area. And I think having it near our harbor is a bad idea. Um, I personally believe that the best place, and I think we're talking about two or three parking spaces, and I think we should be very clear that it is two or three parking spaces, no more than that, um, is right here at City Hall.
No, no, absolutely not.
Right here, well, if I, if I could finish, if I could finish one. Um, there are eyes on this place, this is in eye shot of one-on-one. We have a county, I'm sorry, could I finish my job? We have a county deputy now that is in and out of this place. Um, so I, I do not believe that anyone near the harbor is appropriate. I think you're right though, that it's really in this kind of city where, where is appropriate and, and I really do believe that right here at City Hall is the most appropriate. In addition to that, I definitely want to see, um, some time limit, so you have one week. I don't know, whatever, whatever timeline will even come up, but you have one week, you must register. And after your week is up, you must vacate and you are not allowed back within a timeframe. Um, and I know other communities like Seaside and Kennedy Beach have implemented that, um.
Mayor, I, I would like to just say that I, I agree with, uh, Councilor Benningfield on this one. I think that, uh, we really need to look closely at, at other areas that the city has. When, when we say we don't own property, I'm not even sure, you know, how much we own or where it's at, but, uh, I, I kind of agree with her on this, I think she makes a good case.
We talked about City Hall extensively, um, and you've got to, um, places for them to, restrooms and, and all of that as well, we've got to bring in port-a-potties to do all of that, um.
I don't know.
Maybe a comment, um, I think that if we had it at City Hall, I think it would have a lot of, we have a lot of problems with people coming into City Hall. And I think that our office staff would be involved with it. Not necessarily on purpose, but people will need things and they need to come and find out questions to answer, it's not afraid to. Our staff would be in the, the inside city and people and the people out of the bus horn. That would be their new job, or part of their new job and that would be a concern. But, do you see that?
Speaking as staff, uh, we would be very concerned about our safety with having people there.
Yeah.
Even if we have a deputy full squad, we would be concerned.
So if you're pushing it down to our harbor, that concern goes toward tourists. Or, or me bringing my six-year-old daughter to the park. I, it, our most intensely used tourist area is not the place to encourage people experiencing homelessness to camp on the harbor, is not.
I don't give a shit.
Are we buying a, a spot of land out by the, by the water plant?
I don't think we want a homeless campout on the water source.
No.
Absolutely not.
Well, it's not our water source, it's downstream from our water source.
So I have a question, Kathy, so at one point, we, we talked about having tents here and we decided that's not a good idea. And as I recall, we talked about, well, we want to have them camping here, but we will pay for them to go to a larger city and have these facilities, is that off the table?
No, no.
I think that's really our.
I'm working diligently on that, working with, uh, Lincoln City and the court to copy part of their options.
I think that's, that's certainly the option, we don't have, you know, we've been looking for land for catches or there's no land.
I know.
And so I think, I think that's the only option, my opinion.
So then the new, um, parking area behind Pirate's Coffee, is there gonna be a restroom facility there? I don't think of, do we talk about that?
Yeah, it's in another phase for that, yeah, in a charging, charging station and restroom is worth, um, you know, long-term phases for that.
Because it's an residential area, excuse me, it's a residential area? I mean, there's people living right there. I can't imagine that that would be.
Well, I, I, yeah, I, I hadn't thought about, you know, the, you know, um, families using the park, but it's really a pretty time limited, um, whatever it is, ten P M to seven A M. So to me that, with the existing facility, that seems practical at this point, um.
Well, why don't we own all this over and search the town for vacant land?
Well, we know that there's not.
I know, that's just it.
We would have to have, you know, facilities for sanitation and, um, yeah, I think that's.
Do we have to have electric, has that been determined? Do we have to have electric or the water, has that been determined?
No, no.
We do not.
Do not.
So port-a-potty satisfies it?
No, no, you have to sanitation over hands, soaking water.
You do have to have so.
There's stuff in that actually says we have to provide that, we just. Said no, doesn't have a requirement, we have to provide what we want to provide, of course, when you use bathroom, but, um, the facilities. So whether or not we have the full blown with everything, there really isn't.
But a port-a-potty would suffice?
Oh, yeah. You also, you, there, there was something in this ordinance about sanitation, I think that's required.
Uh, this is our ordinance saying that if we do this, it's specific rules to sanitation, but we don't have to provide it. That's not part of what they, we're not provided as part of the law that we have to give them sanitation services. You don't have to give them water, electricity, we just have to provide a place for them to sleep, sit, lie down and be warm. That's it.
And be warm?
Well, cover, you know, cover for the elements.
Do they provide their own cover?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We have no requirement to do that. I read the, there was a recent case where adjudicated with the city of Bedford and the court ruled on the side of the city. And I digested that thing and it was like, okay, it's kind of eye-opening about, well, this is what they said. And the fact that the city gave them a place to be, even if they set conditions on how long they should be there and they set things like, they have a civil, they have an exclusion ordinance, I don't know if you saw that, where they're saying that if you, you, uh, you're not allowed in certain places of the city, if you are, you're, um, drugs or, you know, certain kind of conditions, the court even said that was okay. So it's really about giving them a place to be, but we get to set the conditions for them to be there.
So I think we have to kind of, I'm not saying we're not, but I think we really do have to consider people experiencing homelessness as deserving of care and of care, period. And whatever we can do to make an awful life, at least, you know, humane, to me is really important. So, I get it that we don't want to have, you know, a lot of people camping for a lot of time in our city, but, um, you know, people are suffering, they're not wanting to be homeless, you know? They, they have mental illness or they have other challenges, so I want to keep our citizens safe, our tourists safe and, you know, we just have to figure out a way to be kind.
Yeah, go ahead, Nancy.
We have a single facility in our community for children to play, one place. And what we're recommending here is to put people experiencing homelessness right next to the only playground we have in town, because people at City Hall would be uncomfortable if it was near them. I'm sorry, it's just absolutely inappropriate, I don't know how else to say it. That we're pushing the problem next to our. That we're pushing the problem next to our only playground.
Just remove the seven o'clock in the morning. They have to be out by seven o'clock in the morning.
So what's the difference? Why, why not have it here? Here, there are eyes on them. Here, if there's something going on with drugs or against any of these regulations, it will be dealt with. There, it's out of sight, out of mind, except for me bringing my six-year-old to the only playground in town.
At seven o'clock in the morning?
Absolutely, I go to the playground. Yes, I go to the playground.
At seven o'clock in the morning?
Do you think it's more fair for me to have to deal with it when I'm bringing a child to the only playground in town? Or at City Hall when there are professionals here? I, I don't think, but nowhere around the harbor, nowhere around the harbor. City Hall is the most appropriate. It really is. And I understand that working, I mean, I work next to homeless encampments right now. I'm not saying that I'm extremely comfortable with it, but it, this is the most appropriate place. Absolutely the most appropriate place. We have professional staff who know, who will know the ordinance and can enforce it. We have a code enforcement officer now. This is absolutely the only appropriate place.
Uh, you know, when you set up these camping areas, one of the concerns that I have, and your friend, I hear Lindsay, I hear you, Aaron Joyce, I think these are all great arguments, one way or the other. I'm confused now, but how do you keep these places clean? Because, you know, from my experience, uh, I don't have any, any encampments out my window right now, but I've covered them extensively over the years. And a lot of these places just turn into kind of hellholes. And how do you prevent that from happening? Uh, is that part of the ordinance that, or do we enforce littering ordinances and environmental?
We just have to. I, I don't know. I, I don't know. Yeah, I mean, all those pieces come down, it is a matter of, I mean, it's in this ordinance. It's well-written. It's just, it's a matter of enforcement. And part of the problem is not for people not having a place to store their stuff, you know? And that's why places like Newport, Lincoln City, that have safe, like lockers or places that people can put their stuff. But it's also people are very mentally ill and they don't throw away their trash and they defecate wherever, you know, even where there's restaurants. I've seen it myself in Newport. But I think we just, we just have to do our best. And I'm kind of in agreement with Lindsay, except that I, the port-a-potty issue is going to be the, uh, problem.
Well, and they build fires and they're out there doing their drugs and.
I really like your idea about bus passes. That was fun.
But we still have to provide, we do have to provide a safe, dry place. So we, it's, it's not, it's and. Yeah, but, you know, but we have to provide for something.
Okay, well, let's, uh, put our heads together and this doesn't need to pass tonight. Uh, well, this is our first reading and we'll, we'll keep working on it here, making the changes. Let's move on to fireworks banning ordinance. We need to amend that, Kim.
Oh, uh, sorry, sorry. Uh, right, so our ordinance, uh, it was interesting because when I was reading what Leaky County was doing and what they were banning, um, Dennis, do you want your?
I would get it, yes, thank you.
Okay. When they were talking about banning fireworks, one of the things I noticed in our ordinance is that it talks about sales and distribution. Or talks about using them in either way, but it doesn't say anything about selling. And I asked about it and I was told that probably the main reason is is because it's really hard to set up a pop-up shop in Deep Bay if you have good, wealthy pool. We've been lucky that nobody has found a way around those. So if we, if I bring an ordinance that, that basically mirrors what Leaky County did, what Walworth did, because they're all banning fireworks, period. So we just need to fine-tune our ordinance. And I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't any questions or objections or if there is anything else you would like to be considered in this ordinance before I bring it to you.
I agree with her.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. I think that's be consistent. And the county is pushing to have a consistent across the place. It makes absolutely no sense to have a ban but not still allow sales.
That's what happened last year.
The Army, Craig Meyer, everything. So Newport was debating that. I don't know what they've done, but that's what has to happen.
They did. They asked, they did. They're doing it real soon.
Okay, there you go, yeah. But yeah, let's keep it out of our attention, sure.
Okay, we'll bring that back to you in.
And, and so that, I mean, really that's, I might look at some of the languages to make sure it's a little more fine-tuned, but that's the primary reason is to make sure that you can't even figure out how to do it and get around the timeframes, they can't do it.
Maybe we should just mirror the county's, um, language on that to make sure it's consistent.
I'll mirror theirs. I'll probably take a look at all the court cases I heard from Kathy.
Okay, thank you. Um, we have an amendment to construction support service from our engineers from the harbor. And does everyone have a chance to read Kim's synopsis of what's happening here? They're asking for an additional $16,000.
It's primarily because of the review and, um, all the work on, they did on that and we're going to see attorneys.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Sorry for speaking out. Was it, it was our responsibility to have caught not the engineers who, um, who advised us that it said low bid instead of best value? Is that really our fault versus the engineer who bought? I mean, I don't, I don't mind paying them for it, but shouldn't their insurance have, or shouldn't have? Their expertise have said to us, hey, this may cause us some problems here? Well, it was their adendum. They, we hired them to do the bid for us. So they did the adendum. Um, I think we looked at them, but, you know, they're, we hired them for their ability to put this together, so. But it's our, we, because we approved it, we should have not seen that question?
It would have been helpful had we seen it, but I think we were all relying on their expertise.
So it, so, I mean, one, this is, I don't want to withhold that, you know, stop this payment because we need their services. But can we have a discussion with them about whether their insurance would cover our costs or?
Well, and then there was $28,000 of legal fees.
Yeah, that too.
That just made my stomach.
Yeah.
Oh, you can absolutely have the discussion, but they are our construction program project managers. So I think you can have a discussion and then you might have to look for another group, you know?
Yeah. It's, it just really, I mean, ultimately we approved the documents.
How can we not make that mistake again?
Oh, that mistake won't be made again, but it's happened. I mean, you know, we, we looked at them. I know that girl looked at them and she, I've had experience in this and she's had more experience in this. I mean, she's worked for a company and it just, it's just missed. But I think we were just like, okay, they're the ones that are hired to do it, so.
Mayor, that's why I asked, uh, the representative from PND to restate their case at our last meeting, if it was an executive session. So like, we had everybody up on the screen. And I'm glad to hear that Councilor Rett is feeling the same way that, you know, some of the others.
We all are, but we need to go with forward with this project and.
Right.
I actually think their $16,000, I think they, I can't say that for sure, but based on how many hours I know that they're putting in with the attorneys, um, I, I think that that doesn't look good. But it's, it's another.
When you look at 28 on top of it, we have to pay for it. I, I get that. But they're, they didn't say we're giving you a break, but that's $16,000. I expect they didn't want to be more than he told me that that's sent and then.
Everything in, in, that I've learned in my one year of service as a city councilor, the one single issue that grabs me more than anything else is liability. Everything we do carries, you know, the potential of a lawsuit or some kind of liability. That's the problem with getting so many projects. And we're a small team here, small town, you know? Narrowly focused and get all the hands on, on board for these things. Not a lot of other issues. Thank you, Mayor.
So is there a motion to accept the agreement for professional engineering services that's submitted for $16,000?
Mayor, I'll make that motion that we, uh, sign the agreement for professional engineering services with, uh, engineers.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion. It's been moved to second to increase the engineering services by $16,000. Is there a discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, thank you, boss. We'll get this going. We need to get things going here.
Pardon me, ma'am?
Gina's, Gina's online listening to everybody and she asked if people could pull their masks a little bit closer, but.
Yes, we're good. Your mom and then your mom. Your mom. She said she can hear you pretty good, but.
Push it away.
Okay. Reduce government rate from mortgage. We have a suggestion from our harbor commission.
And the chair would like to speak.
And Jack, do you want to come up and talk to us about this?
Thank you, Mayor, to the council. The recommendation that the harbor commission made was it, uh, 50% discount on transient and annual mortgage fees to government and research vessels. And the Coast Guard should be exempt from mortgage fees. And I notice in the resolution that research vessels is, research vessels were eliminated. And both OSU and U of O have research vessels that they, who are at Newport and, um, Charleston. And I wonder, I mean, we put it in for that particular reason.
I don't know why.
Yeah.
Yes.
I think I can answer that for you, Matt. Jack, uh, those are government vessels. Those are registered with, uh, government entities. What we're trying to avoid is we have a number of charter vessels that are contracted with NOAA or ODFW or other government agencies. Well, I know, but we just want to make, you know, they are research vessels though. They're, they're engaged in research. Uh, so we just don't want to have any.
Are you talking about our charter vessels that these folks go out on for?
Correct.
Yeah, but they are not research vessels per se. They're charter vessels. These are research, specifically research vessels. And that's, that's why we put that.
But they're government vessels. They're owned by the government, a government entity.
We maybe we should say on government and university vehicles, vessels.
Government and university, that would be good.
That covered it, Jack?
That, that'd be fine, yeah.
I think that, I, I understand.
Thank you.
Pardon me, are university vessels only ever research? You could say university.
University research vessel.
Yeah, university research vessels.
I think the harbor commission would be pleased with that suggestion. Thank you.
Oh, great.
And I think the city would also.
Boy, you're going to look good at the next meeting.
No, just, uh, they don't want it this way.
So sir, a motion, motion to accept for resolution number 556-24, City of Deep Bay, a resolution amending resolution 520, 543-23 to provide provisions for a government rate. And, um, with the addition of government and research.
Mayor, I've taken the motion that we adopt a resolution 556-24, the amendment regarding the university vessels.
Is there a second?
Second, yeah.
It's been moved to second after we accept, uh, resolution 556-24 as amended with the amendments. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Jack.
Thank you.
Appreciate you helping there. Oh, Brady, we've got, um, Microsoft Solutions Research Project. Ben, do you want to bring us up to date on that?
Uh, this is, oh, okay. Uh, yeah, this is something that has been, uh, a lot of times these group, these groups, and this is what OSU, TSU do these studies. When I worked for Plaquemines County, we were involved in, in these, these studies where they come and they want to work with staff to take samples and they do their testing and things like that. And in the studies that I was involved in, they didn't pay us anything. So it was interesting to see that they're going to reimburse the staff time. But what it just means is I just, I wanted to say yes because I think it's a worthwhile thing and anytime you can help out, a study to get more information to make things better is always good. But I didn't really want to make this particular thing without talking to the councils at all to see if you wanted us to participate in this. And, um, it will use some staff time. And I did discuss with them just what the requirements were because we didn't have that information that, you know, that they gave you is what they've been providing to other cities. And I think, I, what's the part that you saw highlighted in yellow?
Yeah.
Okay, so those were the only things that really applied to us. So they would let us give us four to six days in advance of a storm. So I was like, well, we don't have time to track storms. So it's just a matter of you guys would identify the storm sites and then they would be with the group when they were taking samples. So it does add some staff time during a storm, but, uh, I, I think that it's a worthwhile thing to do. And I know that all the works would be like, oh, I got this thing. But I know Brady would support, you know, anything that gets better information on our storms and how these microplastics work. It's very interesting.
And we are affected by them.
Mm-hmm, absolutely. Everybody must have seen that article about how much was in a.
On the, there.
And those are micro, not nanoplastics, you see.
Same waters as in our drinking water.
And they'll share the results of the study on our, our storm currents and stuff like that with us, so. So one, one other thing, it's a possibility, maybe not a likely.
Probably the gravity.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, the influence there.
Yeah, so he's just confirming where they're going to do it for us, so.
One of the possibilities, they're going to pick, um, two of the communities they're working with and provide, um, uh, insert for your washing machine to collect, uh, and as, to see if that reduces the load of plastics coming in the voice volume. So, um, they asked me if we had a newsletter. And I said, no, we have a Deep Bay community Facebook. We have, you know, that, because they would try to get 10% of the population. So I don't know if that will happen or not, but we would get free washing machine filters if they choose us. So I haven't heard anything more, but it seems, seems, yeah, I know Brady's a little concerned about the extra time, but, um, are you okay with that, Brady?
Well, yeah, we did that COVID testing and it was a lot of making sure that you're writing down time and samples and we had to freeze them and then if you don't freeze them long enough, you had, because there's a lot of
I don't think there's.
small little details in, in the COVID testing. It was, oh, it's not.
No, I, I didn't get, from what they said, it's not, that is awful. And it's not here like that, so. Because it sounds like they're going to do a lot of work. They're just going to be having you guys there with they, with grabbing.
Yeah, they, they do like this.
Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to give a shout out to Councilor Rett for this because, uh, I don't know if anybody knows this, but she's really a pioneer in the issue of, with Brady. And I think she did the research, the original research on Brady off of our coastline. And, uh, I just want to encourage you to keep up, good job.
Alrighty, any other, are, are we all concurs that we should go ahead with this? Okay, thank you, okay. Oh, project updates. Any questions on what's going on in the city?
I do have a very exciting update that's now right here. Um, I saw, we see the coronation letter. And shortly after, we got a draft in 1928. We're.
Really?
Um, yeah.
Have you looked it over?
I, I did and so far it's good, but, um, we're going to look at it again and then we're going to ask an independent person, just a type that we, you know, the gentleman that we use, um, not Moody, but Matt Brown, and just say, hey, can you just make sure things look? But there's no findings. There's no discrepancy in that or anything like that, so.
We get a clean bill of health, we put.
A bill of health.
So is he still fired?
He's still fired, but. What drives me crazy is he had submitted it for. What drives me crazy is he had submitted it for review two weeks prior to receiving our termination letter, but he never reached out to me to tell me that he had done it.
Submitted it to where?
They have independent reviewers themselves that have. It's part of their process. Internal process, yeah.
Yeah, well, he should have said that.
He should have said that, then maybe we wouldn't have done it, but I mean, I, you know, so it's like, okay, but.
And the best news is?
They're not charging us, not charging us. He said that was.
We just stayed out of it on this, that's wonderful.
He said this, and he said several times that there will be no charge.
Are other communities getting the same treatment?
I don't know, I told our county administrator who, and he did not indicate that. He said, guys stepped forward in the right direction, but he didn't say how they're doing.
Wow.
That's crazy.
So it was having a drive to you, Jimmy, and said we're accomplished.
Oh, my God. I have a question.
Yes.
Brady, I, I heard that there was no water on Spring Street because we didn't have a pump that could pump water. Is that, is that the city's issue or was that Spring Street never put it in?
They put the system in.
So, but when we accepted their system?
They said, this, this is our system, we're happy with this, we, we maintain it.
But we never had to check it and we just assumed that they had a pump?
In that, in that, in that power network. Power had never gone out in that meantime, maybe for an hour here and hour there.
They didn't, excuse me, everybody stop, they did not have a generator to run it and back. But was, is that the city's issue or is it the Spring Street development issue?
Well, it's a reaction to a problem that never existed until the power went out for three days. So in the tenure of U of A, twenty-three years, they never had a power outlet, so it never became an issue.
Right.
But when they handed the system over to the city, there's an engineer's report and fire department. And so they figured that, you know, that everything's fine, the fire trucks have water, so, but, you know. So at that time, there was probably only eighteen houses there. I mean, this is our system.
Yeah.
We built this, and you please maintain it as it's built.
Right.
And that's what happened.
So as.
And so we'll fast forward to now, three days of no power, where's the generator and it's U darn City and all this, you know. So we're looking at getting a transfer switch, we're getting a cost estimate on that. And that's step one, so if they do run out of power, we could feasibly plug in a generator and run the pumps so they could have water during the power outage. And then maybe this budget, we could get another trailer generator, it's like we're gonna maybe have to get two more. That would give the city three to run buildings and probably community hall and then that pumps it. That's the only one other than Collins, and it's smaller, so it doesn't need a really big one. But that's be the only other station that really pumps up hill, no hills, the big bay. They're even tighter than that, although they're gonna have a storage tank to provide themselves with water. We'll have seventy thousand, you know, about seven hundred thousand gallon tank to supply the water.
Okay, thank you.
Can I, can I ask just in general, how do things go with sewer and water during?
So, fine, our generators ran fine. We have to, we have to transfer fuel to the generators at Vista Harbor because, you know, we have major pump stations. Because sewer runs into gravity and you have to pump the back of pillar runs to gravity. There's three, Vista Harbor and then the main plant. And those would just have to keep fuel going, but the generators ran fine, the guys do good work with exercising them monthly. So they ran really well.
I had to make water.
Oh, yeah, the water plant does have a generator.
Same when the guys were telling me they had to make water.
It's been, since mid-nineties, we had really long power outs and we exercised the generator at water, but we never really had to make water with the generator. And it, it was a little bit, some of the power did go out. It, it lost memory on some of the PLCs, which is all automated. So we had to overwrite everything with extension cords and running, uh, primary unit.
They did a lot of it, but they worked through the night somehow.
The mains, yeah, they had to stay during the night because they had to visually go in and see when the pumps were drawing down the contact basin, so it was a lot.
Spring house.
But we were able to make water fill the tank by, that was the day, so Monday.
Monday.
Yeah, we had enough water because it really started to go quickly. For whatever reason, we're not sure, but open pipes, it was really cold, we're not sure, but we'll go to our leader reading if that was the case. And I think that's what happened is some folks probably had some hoses or something that froze and then they got out during the day and we was quite a bit of water there Sunday.
Have you had an opportunity to kind of write this down, this?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we have log books that we keep track of everything.
And we, we wrote notes down during.
And then we have stuff like fuel transferring and we're gonna put transfer switches, we're just kidding.
I touched on Brady, I guess.
Yeah, but as far as the tools and the, and the crew and everything, it went fine.
They were great, they were awesome.
We were able to get this place, uh, nice, you know, we plugged the city hall and the things were coming down because we could cook food here, we had to cook food down there. So we moved the generator and community hall, it went okay.
For a while, city hall was nice and tasty.
Yeah.
And then it took great generating.
But yeah, all in all, it, it went pretty well. As far as the crew goes, so, we did, everybody stepped up.
I'd like to see whatever you need at the water and sewer plant in particular that came, became apparent during the ice storm, I'd like to see that in the next.
Yeah, so what we're really gonna use some good US, so we had tagging there, it's our automation group, they're the ones that do our programming. And they said to get some better UPS systems, uninterrupted power supply, battery backups to run the PLCs so they don't lose memory. And they have them now where even if they'll run for, say, ninety minutes as a normal UPS, but it, the batteries won't go completely dead or loses the memory of the PLCs, so that's the hard bit. We had issues.
And then a transfer switch down at the community hall, so they had to do this by cords when they did it. But we're getting a quote for a transfer switch down there, there's another place.
Yeah, and then, uh, U of A, there is one here.
We are, we're fine here.
We have one here to just plug in.
Yeah, we're fine here, we just needed a second generator. Um, the biggest thing the guys want that we're gonna put in the budget is a hundred gallon tank in the back of Al's truck so that they can fill up fuel, so they don't have to have so many trucks, a five gallon tanks. And the guys, they said they were, Al and DJ were just covered in diesel by the time they did all that, so.
Yeah, like a transfer fuel fluid, fuel bunker and.
And, oh, and they want a hose, hose pump, a pump.
Yeah.
So, because they would do it and the wind would kick.
Oh, God.
Yeah, we could get a, a, a skate mount that goes on the flatbed, they'll, they'd tank and they don't have the nozzle or anything more.
They're pretty, they're pretty, they, they, they rest, they rest it through.
Yeah. Would any of this be covered by the emergency, Jack, or Brady?
Well, that's what I'm.
Yeah.
That's.
We have, I think, the.
And Sam sent me a huge email, said all of us that we found about what we need to do to report. So that's why they're kind of working on getting quotes and stuff like that. Is it maybe, is it, part of it is, and as I put in the declaration, to recover from an emergency, so. And what do we need that helps us? Well, we, we need one, two generators, we get fuel tank and all of this stuff. The harbor did have a little hiccup as well down there at the fuel bunker with waste and wiring was done, but we had the electrician come out and fix that, so everything's fine there. So it wasn't bad, but there were definitely lessons learned, so. And Brady goes, we gotta do something about with people using their cell phones and how to communicate, so that was crazy.
Yeah.
I have another question. This is in the engineering report, I think seventy-seven. Where is Benson Ave slash Vista Terrace, road is failing, what do the city utilities have risk? That's what I.
Jack, the, right front of Jack's house.
Yeah, just up the, just up the street from Mayo.
The roads, the roads flying.
I'm sorry, where, where is?
Carson, so Willing Avenue, Carson, Vista Terrace.
Oh, okay.
Carson, Vista Terrace.
Carson, Tom Carson. And that's all, goes up to Vista Terrace, you know, on the mark.
I never knew where you live.
Yeah, there's a small pump on.
Now they all know.
Which, which is where, why I get water, it gets pumped down across the street and then I've got a pump and accumulator in my garage to get it up to Mayo.
Wow.
But I never lost what, people, north of Mayo.
That's why.
Right, right.
I, I only had a trickle, but that spilled up the toilets and my girls were happy, so.
Yeah. And East Bridge? Number twelve, the attorney responds to city.
So, so East Ridge is Lane Street, and you go through the gate, you know, way into Williams. And you turn left to get on Highway, if you go right, that could take you right up to East Ridge, it's a gated, there's two homes up there people live in. But it's, it's problematic because it was put in without approval, the fire department has a big, long protocol book that says they're not entering that area if there's.
No, they're supposed to put in.
The road's flying in.
They're supposed to put in sprinklers because they weren't accepted by the fire.
No, they can't even get a truck up there, they can't get an ambulance up there.
Right. They didn't have that, where they put that in.
Yeah, it was never approved, the water, nothing was ever really approved correctly. So what the attorney has told us in the past, and the city probably still should do this with some more engineering background, but East Ridge should be declared point of metering, which we could put a large meter down below and they could, then we're not really responsible beyond that line.
Good, yeah, we should.
Yeah, I mean, it's in the budget, but it's such a big project, we have to, and the reason why it has to be so big is because there's a fire. There's a pump station, but they, they do maintain that. But the city, you know, pays for the power, so there's been all these kind of strange things over the years because we do build it for water, that we have to maintain power and things like that. But it's been one of these, like, several, you know, twenty plus thirty years, or I don't even know how long it's been when it started, of kind of being on, waiting for them to bring it up to code and nothing's like happened.
Are they occupied?
Yes, yeah, yeah. The Douglas's are living one and the other one's a vacation home and the Douglas's live full time.
Yep.
They got it like in a, in an auction house. It's like.
Scary up there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Vacation home or vacation rental?
There's one vacation home, not a rental, but a vacation home for one of the owners, a big white one that's up to the north. And then the Douglas's live in the, the one that you can kind of see from the paint. Yeah, there is, yeah, it's interesting. One of the moving trucks completely, when they went up to turn, fell completely split all the way down.
There's a pretty big slide that has happened last six months.
Up there?
Well, I mean, not on the road, but visible.
You can see the cracks in the, and then the gravity is pulling the whole road down because it's like built on the salt and it's just being pulled down with gravity.
Brady took me up there one day to see it and up, it was like, oh, let's get our city out.
I think that was our city engineers' reaction, I was like, whoa.
He's grabbing the dashboard.
I think he was more scared of that than Mark or Prick.
Any other questions on projects? Okay, any closing public comments? Oh, I guess I'll expand, right? Okay, council comments.
Yes, council comments.
Next one, let us start.
No, I just wanted to thank you and Kim and Brady, especially for all the work that you did during the ice storm. Really, really appreciate it.
Well, it, it made us a little bit, um, unprepared, so thank you. We're gonna get prepared.
Uh, did you have any?
Yeah, I was gonna make up safety about damage on our land, because that's what happened in Portland with the three people.
Right, right.
I think we need to have some sort of like public safety, you know, campaign or something. Just a refresher, some, also including other storm safety.
Yeah.
It's just, that's, should have been so easily avoided and I think we need to do more to educate people.
Yeah, totally agree.
Yeah, that cross the highway was very interesting.
No, it's not that happened, I was not part of that happening, but obviously it's right by my house.
Was.
That young kid was flying over the hot wire and watching and trying to put it out with a little fire extinguisher, huffing over there.
Oh, my God.
Yeah. Fran, did you have anything?
Just to thank Autumn and Joyce for cooking.
Yeah.
I took advantage of the hot soup, it was delicious.
It was so good.
Thank you. Thank coffee. Coffee was important.
I don't have. Counselor?
Thank you, ma'am, I would like to say something. And I appreciate your comments, very frankly, about where we are in our emergency areas.
Why not?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And I spent a lot of time over the last couple of months after I raised some questions about the committee, I felt, you know, well, I needed to get in and really dig in. I had a meeting with Joyce and Karen Enrique to find out more about the committee. And I wanted to attend this meeting that occurred last night, but I noticed that we don't have a Zoom capability on this committee tonight. Hoping that we can.
We're certainly starting to get community on Zoom, but we have happy emergency.
I think there's, it was mentioned tonight, there's a tremendous amount of interest in this topic. And I want to say again, after, I, I didn't attend the meeting, but I did look at the agenda of the emergency plan. I look at this committee and all of its actions through the lens of our emergency operations plan, which states in its opening words that the city council is responsible for emergency preparedness. That is our responsibility. And if we're not gonna use that plan, then we should disavow it and get our names off of that because someday they're gonna be an actor action for it. On Depot Bay, I'm not gonna say these people have a plan, I needed to put it into effect.
Right.
It, it spelled out.
We haven't had a chance to get through all of that yet.
Everything, I just want to say, it spelled out, all the answers are in this emergency operations plan. And my feeling is that nobody's reading it.
I went at home and I've read it, but I haven't. We have not sat down as a council and done any work plans to follow it. And so that's my goal, is to get our first work session will be emergency operations plan, thank you. Okay, um, any other comments?
Do you, uh, do you want to set a work session? Because the other thing I, I forgot to mention was the watershed post, no more emergency here, maybe that reason.
Oh, they should do that too.
Right, so I spoke to them, it's, there's, there was kind of, gee, I swear, I don't know what you know. I know that the words would be the end and the end of those, right? So I don't know if you want to try to reschedule a big work session to February, you may get it February sixth, decide what you want to do, but the mornings we can give up that. I think the emergency plan is more important right now, don't you think?
Do we have a work session or thing on February twentieth?
We do not, I have.
They do not have a.
So I'm, that's what I'm asking, the council wants to schedule the date right now. Otherwise, you can wait until February sixth and schedule the date.
So just stepping back just one second, the only reason, so what, we didn't have time to ask questions last time.
Right.
And that might be good to have at least, you know, half an hour for us to, you know, behind ourselves where we're at, and go through the power points ourselves and then ask those questions. And I think that we asked last time, or somebody asked, what are the three next things we can do? And they had prepared to answer that, or they did answer that, at least to me, but we should share that around. But the other thing is, there's a grant opportunity that would give us, that they would work with us and that would be the next steps to plan and what's due in March. And so I think it's March, can you remember the date, or she, maybe she didn't remember when it's March she thought it was due. So if we want to proceed with establishing priorities, like which properties or which watersheds, I think we basically said when people get crazy, but which properties are the only, and, you know, which areas, you know, sort of telling, taking what they have done about, you know, only this area would be protected more through the forest practice support because of the steepness, all these others are really steep too. So that, that's the reason, we probably, the only reason we need a grant, I mean, a meeting sooner than later to have the opportunity to submit this, this only once a year. So, and I think all we would need to do is basically give them direction. Yes, we want to pursue this and then they help us work through the grant application. But they don't, we really haven't given them the direction that we want to pursue it.
What, what did the grant be for?
For planning, for getting our ducks in the row to say, you know, reaching out to landlords, the timber company saying, you know, would you be willing? I have just general ideas that they might be, but not in the higher ups. It's really not the need to do that, it's for us to look at it and say that. And then to take all the information they presented, but put it in this application, you know, in this plan. And once we do planning, say, okay, because this is steep or this is close to our, you know, it just. You know, it just would allow us to have money for planning.
And that's up to like a hundred thousand dollars, wasn't it?
I think it's a lot of money, yeah, and that was a lot of money. And would get us ready for any acquisitions we would do.
Or anything else, the thing I, I like about this is you can do your planning. But I walked away from that last meeting, the watershed, folks, with the feeling that there are many ways to scan, to work with companies, to buy their property, to, you know, to co-lan.
Peace signs or something, yeah.
It's all sorts of angles.
So it would allow us to do exactly that, to say, which is the best way to proceed and, yeah.
So, Kim, do you want to find out their solicitor availability?
I tentatively talked to her about it and there, I know she's not at the end of the month, so we were looking at whether or not you wanted to have it on Tuesday. It's really what you want, I said I would discuss.
Can they zoom in?
Yeah, they would zoom in.
Well, they, they actually, I think, want to be in person if they can, but they would zoom in as an alternate.
Oh, with the, so that, that was where they ended them? Because there is a water planning meeting in Newport on February sixth.
Yes.
And they can't, they were gonna come after that, but we can't, they said it's gonna be too tight, right?
Right, because it would have to be at five, because we have a council meeting at six, so it was too tight, wouldn't work for them. So we talked about if we have another work session, if like six o'clock would come for them to be able to come in any time. They didn't say that would work for them, so you do the two hour work session, do the first hour at EOP and the second hour on watershed.
So what day would that be?
I didn't know if you want to stick with Tuesdays, so the twentieth, Council Betty Field is the next council meeting, that might be why you know that marked down.
Yeah.
So if you want to stick on Tuesdays, it would be the thirteen foot, the last week floor is not available.
So the thirteen?
Yeah.
What, thirteen?
The record.
Is the only other day that you have, if you want to stick on Tuesdays.
And that would be six?
Five to seven?
Five to seven.
If you want to do five, and I will verify with them and let them know, but it was for the later part of the month, that was more challenging for it.
I'm not available, but that's okay, that's, that's fine.
You should be there.
Well, I know, I can catch up later and I kind of, I know where this would be headed, so it's really needing to concurse from the council whether or not we're not pursuing it. I don't really see that.
Yeah, sorry.
Is that a regular council night?
No, it's an off week. Would any other days work?
Not that big, I'm actually out of country.
What about the week of February sixth?
Yeah, let's find that data.
I said it's a council meeting.
Right.
But any other day that we?
We have a one hour work session on February sixth, don't we? But that's a day they can't leave?
That's the day they can't, so there's nothing scheduled, but they said they can't get there, they can't get here before six.
And Michelle said she asked me, I think she said something like that. Is this room being used any other day that we?
Uh, no, it is not.
Seven?
The next night is seven?
Yeah.
Okay, we're in the seventh?
Yes.
Three to seven. Four, so we do both that day?
Sounds like an hour each.
On the seventh?
Or we? Right, so, I mean, if you want to do, it depends on what the council's pleasure is. Do you want to do, you can do an hour on the EOP eight and then an hour at six o'clock with the watershed posts, or reverse it. Or you could just stick with one or the other.
Should we say five thirty water and then six thirty EOP?
Five thirty?
Yeah. That way.
Five thirty water and then six thirty EOP?
Okay, on the seventh, February seventh? So we'll, we'll have to confirm to see if they're available.
That works, time travel works.
Okay.
In anticipation of the EOP conversation, what should we?
Well, I'm gonna go through the emergency manual and we'll, Kim and I put together a whole engine deck.
Okay, okay.
Because we need protocols in place and how we're gonna go forward with informing residents because we need some sort of communication to get words out and I know we've got our radios, but we need more training on them. I'm actually thinking I might learn how to do Facebook because I guess that's the way to communicate with people.
But I didn't have any self-service and a lot of people didn't, so that does absolutely no good.
I know, I know, so we've got to think of outside the box, how we can get to our residents and see what their needs are and and, and tell them what they need to be prepared for. So I'll work with Joyce as well and Lindsay on what they're putting together as well so that we can have some good information.
But our committee is not meeting again until after that date.
Okay, okay, but I'll, I'll, generally.
We can have a little meeting, okay?
Yeah, we'll have a little.
Yeah, and we'll teach Facebook.
I don't know if you can teach this all, but.
My face is Facebook.
This is Facebook.
My face is Facebook. That's what my grandma used to.
Yeah, we keep it very private and don't have many friends, just keep it very private.
I don't know anything about it.
Don't talk to anybody.
Just.
Well, the whole thing would be that, we just, if there's an emergency, we tell people that the hub of information is the community center.
Right.
And even if we can open it up for shelter, they can have, can post it at the door. Just know you're coming down to the community center. So we don't, we don't have to communicate. If they, if something happens, I mean, that's all we need to communicate. If in doubt, or the community center doesn't learn anything.
That is in the EOP, in fact, that's what the EOP says, is to say that's.
I don't know, we're not. We're not?
No.
We're all being serious with this.
Okay, now we're turning, sorry.